Ladies and gentlemen, we are about five minutes away from starting the city council meeting here at Ashburn. I'm gonna pan just a bit and show you. There are lots of people wanting me to go live tonight, but as I explained on Facebook just a little while ago, which will be quite a bit later for those of you watching this, I can't. Facebook will not let me hold my camera in a vertical position. I mean, in a horizontal position. I have to hold it in a vertical position, and I can't get everything on camera in that case. Besides which, the reception here in City Hall is downright terrible for recording things. I just can't get online and stay online decently. It keeps going in and out, so you have to put up with a tape delay. Just to give you some idea, there's Jan Winter. She's our election superintendent. Across the way from her, wearing the gray hoodie, is former councilman Howard Jordan. Right there is county commissioner Dana Whitten, Bob Mitchell, John Y. Christian, Judge Christian, Chuck Bobo. There's Blake. We've got some paramedics here in the audience. Matthew's waving at us. There's our fire chief and one of the police officers who will be discussed, no doubt, tonight. There's some talk about laying them off. I'm told county, not county, I'm told city manager Darrell Hall will not be here this evening, as he is under the weather, I bet. I'm not allowed to say much more about that. There you go. You can see my orange hat. That's where I'll be seating in just a few minutes. And having said that, council is all here except for Mr. Sheldon Smith. I'm gonna go take my seat. I forgot to mention a moment ago, you may hear a buzzing noise in the background, and you'll see people walking in. We have added security tonight for the city council meeting, and people are going through a metal detector as they come into the municipal courthouse tonight. There's Chris, one of our food bank volunteers. Glad to have him here tonight. George Kennedy just walked in. All right, I'm gonna go back to my seat.
The sun's reflecting off that windshield on your back. I guess you could open the other one.
May I? May I? I was in the other one. Sunshine and everything. You need to open it.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here with us tonight for our November the 2nd regular scheduled council meeting. At this time, I'm gonna ask you to stand and join us for our invitation. Anybody?
I'd like each of you to take a moment of silence for the citizens that we've lost. Heavenly Father, we come to you today from this court building here in Ashburn, Georgia. We're thanking you for safe travel and grace, and asking you for safe travel and grace back home to our safe places. Lord, we ask that the mayor, the council, as well as the city attorney make the best decisions for the citizens. We ask you to please forgive our city manager and his ass since he's sick. And, Lord, we ask you to watch over him and help him through his healing. Lord, we hope that we all do what is best for our communities and not for ourselves. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Heavenly Father, we declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with thy great justice for all.
Ms. Hill, let me have a roll call, please.
Captain John Rodriguez.
Present.
Captain Laura Jordan.
Here.
Captain Andrew Pierce.
Present.
Captain Sheldon Smith.
Present.
Captain Demaryne Rockwell.
Present.
Captain Sandra Longton.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve the agenda with amended changes for guest speaker Captain James Wise to come forward and discuss the ISO rating.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
Yes.
You oppose the approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Captain Wise, would you come forward, please?
First, what do you kind of want to do here?
I want you to explain how it will affect the city of Ashburn without a fire chief in the ISO rating. I know you put it in our package.
Yeah.
But I think it's best for you to try to explain it than me trying to explain it, because I want to make sure it's told correctly, or I might say something that's not correct.
It really wasn't about the fire chief. It was just about the ISO rating, because I was answering questions, and I said the best way to do it is to put it after all, everyone on the council. Not, you know, somebody asked me a question, I answer them the best I can. So I sat down and did a study on it. I looked at the ISO, what it used to be here. You know, it's a nine, and that's where you start off at. If you ain't got no fire department, it's a class ten. The minimum is a nine. Once you form a fire department, you're a class nine, and that's operating with volunteers or whatever, you know. You just gotta organize fire department. So I'm gonna go off the minimum cost. I didn't know I was speaking at that. So with no light, with class ten, your insurance rating is forty to fifty percent higher. The class nine is thirty to forty percent more than what they're paying now for a class two. Now, what I remember I put in there, that certificate, it could've changed today. It could change daily, because there's fire departments in the states, in the United, all over the United States, that may have lost their certification today. Because standards and training comes down in this state's fire department once a year. If you lose that certification, you're not even compliant, so that ISO rating don't count. See what I'm saying? So that's, that's the part that I was answering about, the class ten, the class nine, and the class two. Now, you get to the class two, like you asked, and that's took a long time. And every fire chief, it don't matter if he's good, bad, or whatever, in your city, county, state, it takes them all. It's a stick, that's all. You see what I'm saying? It takes every one of them to get to where you're going. It don't matter what you think, because it's the old days or whatever. It takes them all. If you look, I went all the way back to when Chief Meadows came, and he slayed on my desk. He had his goal, class two. So that's where we at, there, class two. And you know, everybody says, hey, you gotta have this, you gotta have this, and this people. Y'all are class two on your own. We don't get no help from anybody. And that's the biggest thing. Ain't there, there's five hundred and thirty-four fire departments in the state of Georgia. Ain't there like sixty-six that's a class two? So as of last week, the city of Ashburn's in the top eight percent of fire departments. You ain't down here at the bottom, you up here at the top. So that's where you wanna stay, up here at the top. Can you make cuts properly? You probably can. There's little things we can do. As I put in there, I sat there for hours looking through it. There's little things you probably do, things we can do better, but you don't want to lose what you got, because there's twenty-nine thousand and something fire departments in the United States. Guess where we at right now? What percentage you think? Still up at the top in eight, eight percent range. So that's, that's what, the reason I done it, because I was asking questions. You wanna stay there, you don't want to lose it, because that thirty to forty percent more homeowners have to pay insurance, you wanna keep. Yes, there's a lot of upkeep, and you gotta keep it balanced. You gotta work on the equipment.
I have a question.
Okay.
Were we not like this, how many years ago at this?
Do what, man?
How many years ago at this, when we first started with?
It was two thousand and something, when Chief Meadows come, or ninety-something.
My next question is, when you got a fire chief or a public director, how ISO ratings not changed?
It won't change.
Thank you.
That's really, that's really not what, you know, but here's the thing, the laws has changed on the, I can't say on the public safety director, different things. It ain't like it used to be, where you can just have one. And they'll take a vote on that on the fourteenth of this month, actually. So, but that, that document, that's, I thought it just, to answer questions about the ISO, it wasn't about what we got, or, you know what I'm saying? Who's operating? It's just what we have, we're class two, and, and they earned it on their own, and the seat's in the top eight percent. But like I said in there, now, it could change tomorrow, just because of the departments that got the state, the United States. But don't, don't lose, the biggest thing is, I was asking, you don't want to lose what you got. We have to, there's things we can do, and we have to do. Just like this week, you see on the record I put in there, all of us got together and kissed the fire hose. Everybody will kiss fire hose, we do all that. And there's other things we can do. But anybody got any questions? Because I really, I wasn't, I just put the document out for all of them, you know. If somebody asked me a question, I said, hey, I'm gonna go answer, I'm gonna do the best of my ability to answer.
What would change the ISO score?
What would change it? Lower or higher?
Lower.
Make it better?
Would be higher.
Oh, maybe higher. Yeah, that, that chart's confusing, because you know, usually look, one of the teams, one of the team, and all, but it's just backwards. The lower you get, the better that you score. And actually, I don't know what it takes, but if you're real close, you're not at the low end of the score. And when we at three, you closer to the low end of the two, it can become a one. But is it feasible? You see what I'm saying? More fire departments could be a class one or two, but is it feasible? The money, they got to spend to do it, and sometimes it's not feasible. Now, I can use the county, it's easier to say the county. I'm trying to make it easy. You got one house, ten miles from anybody, it ain't feasible. We got a fire department there, for one, 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 one home. But here in the county, it's a lot different, or a lot easier. But it could go higher, two or three, just, I was not doing something, like the hose did this week. You know, you skip that, one or two years, or you're gonna be losing four or five, or like, I, I'll use the service truck. We have our discussion about the service truck. The service truck is about four points. How much you think the backup engine is? Then you can probably have half a point. So if you lose your service truck, guess what you lost? A lot of points. And guess what? You could be closer to a three. I go up, so. But the lower, and I did put on there about the business, the lower that ISO is, it have a big take on the business. So, you know, it takes, you know, you go up to a class eight, and you know, your insurance is three times higher than somewhere, somewhere down the road. Where you think they're gonna put the business? They wanna put it somewhere else, and so it has a lot of things. Any, any other questions?
Yeah, just from your experience, um, about having a fire chief who come and take everything.
Do you want me to be honest, or? I've seen it work in one or two places. I, I worked with a good guy who was a straight in the county, Silver and Georgia. They made it a, uh, the public safety director. And it worked over there, but now they're not. I, I actually call you, but he retired, and I said, he done something to you. So. I'll be honest, it's going high, but you have to wait and see. Here's what you have. Sometimes they spend all their time over here, or over here, sitting on the plate, so. There, there, I'm not okay to speak about, you know, the, I'm just telling you what I've seen over the years. There ain't many of them in the state of Georgia. But like I said, I was, I was asking a bunch of questions about the ISO, and I just sat down and refreshed my mind and went through the paperwork and come up with that. Because I wasn't gonna answer nobody, I was gonna answer all of them, and just put it after all, everyone, you see what I'm saying? And you can read it, you might not know that all, but you might not know it, but what I will tell you, is come to somebody and research, because everything's been told by that ISO might not be true. There's lots of things you can do, and there's lots of things you don't have to do. So, anything else? Trying to ask your question, or?
Sure.
All right, I just, anything else? Do you?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, we will move on to the next item, which is the approval of the October 5th, 2023 regular council meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
I have my motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the October 12th, 2023 hall council meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
I have my motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Jan Winter, elections board superintendent. She's going to discuss our upcoming elections, because we're gonna have to decide where we're gonna have them. With the school being under construction, which is where, as everybody knows, we usually hold our elections, we're gonna have to find another location.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me have the time to address you. With the school construction and the fact that there's been concerns that I have with the safety of the students and the voters being in the civic center while the students are in the civic center, the issue of the security of our election equipment, when I took the machines in there and locked the room, chaining the doors shut, people have keys and still go in and out when the election machines are in there, which is a direct violation of the Secretary of State's rules. We have the issue of the school construction. Right now, you can no longer even access the civic center through the front. The alternative to school gaming was to have it back by the football field, and everybody have to walk in and around to get there, which just is totally unacceptable. We've got too many voters that have physical handicaps or just come back, they don't want to walk. Being that said, Board of Elections has the authority to change the polling place. So we have run the legal notice and the wire grass, it has to run two weeks. Around this week, it'll run next week. On October, or on November 14th, at 10:00 a.m., there will be a public hearing. We have permission, or the state grants permission to the state, or to the county election board to change the polling place. So we will be moving the county, the state, and the federal elections to the Old Moultrie Tech Turn County Agricultural Building, which is outside the city limits. City Limits comes down industrial to the corner of Rock House. When you turn off of industrial onto Rock House, you're outside the city limits. Probably fifteen years ago, Sycamore approved a similar change, that they've been voting at Sycamore City Hall, they moved it to the Board of Elections. The city limits comes up to Skynyrd's Gym. So basically, you can see from one place to where the voting is, which is the same situation here. You can see Moultrie Tech from industrial to the city limits. In terms of, do people know where it is? Yeah. When FEMA gave out free food vouchers, the ballot failed. Everybody could find the building. So some telling me that somebody doesn't know where it is, does not hold water. Being that said, issues been right, those have been right in the paper. After the public hearing, Board of Elections will vote on whether to move the polling place or not, with the meeting and public hearings are open to the public. If it's approved, signs will be posted, or required by law to post a four-by-four sign on the previous polling place, plus post three other signs on top, ready for the election to call the voters. Yes, sir.
I mean, you know, so the council don't have a right to say that we're gonna have the election yet?
I'm getting there.
Oh. I just noticed you said that the board and that child, you put it?
The county, state, and federal. The county, state, and federal. Now, at that point, new voter registration cards will be sent to all people that are affected by the change from the civic center to Moultrie Tech. The city of Ashburn, I am asking them to approve the change in the polling place from the city limits to two tenths of a mile outside the city limits. I have discussed with several city officials, I've discussed with Board of Election members. We have looked long and hard to find a suitable place in the city limits that will work. We have the issue that it has to be APA compliant. There has to be sufficient parking for thirty or forty cars all day long. There has to be exterior lighting, sufficient electricity to run the election machines, and they take a lot of power to power the back, the printers. Even though we have battery backups, we still are required to make sure that there's adequate power. We have to have heat and air conditioning and bathrooms. We have to be assured that there's safety for the equipment, the poll workers, and most of all, the voters. Now, should the city decide not to move the election, my option is to let the city run their own election, which they did when we, when I first moved here, which was in 2004. I think 2004, 2006, the city did run their own election.
You know we ain't got time to put a election go, huh? You know it.
I'm aware of that. So the city can run their own election, they'll have to use paper ballots, because they cannot use my election, the election machine, because I'll be using it to run the county, state, and federal elections.
I see, but you already knew what the county and federal is.
Okay, so the next sheet goes through basically spelling out what the cost of the election would be with paper ballots. You're required to have seventeen days of early voting, from Monday through Friday. The state requires nine to five. You're required to have four, or three individuals at all times. The problem is, if somebody goes to lunch or to the bathroom, all voting must cease. So we run all early voting with four people. Assuming minimum wage of seven and a quarter to pay poll workers for the seventeen days of early voting, which is three weeks of five days plus two Saturdays, would come up to $4,437 just for early voting. Election day polls must be open from seven to seven. Workers have to arrive by six a.m. by state law. They will be there until you're done counting the ballots. I can't tell you if that'd be nine o'clock, ten o'clock, midnight, whatever. You are required to have a poll manager, and two assistant managers, and I'm estimating you'll need at least three other workers to run election day. need at least three other workers to run election day voting. At seven and a quarter, that would still come up to six hundred and ninety-six dollars. Now, to use paper ballots, since there are no election jobs, yes, sir?
So, city paid for the early election, right? We paid it off, right?
No. When the city does not pay, when there is a county election being run, the cities of Rebecca and Sycamore pay because they vote in odd number of years. The city of Ashford has never paid for an election. If there is a county election being run at the same time.
The county pay you?
The county absorbs the cost of the election, yes. They absorb all costs, printings, poll workers, training, everything. The county pays for that to run the elections.
I told the county commissioner, and I told them what was in the paper, and they said...
The county pays for the county, state, and federal elections. Okay, so we're discussing the city election at this stage. And so I said, odd number of years Rebecca and Sycamore have been built. As Mr. Baker can tell you, one year unfortunately, it averaged almost a hundred dollars of vote for the city of Rebecca, because they only have a hundred registered voters. And when the costs were added up, theirs ended up just under a hundred dollars for every vote. They only had twenty show up. So, the city does not pay, and has not paid up till now, because it is included in the same time that county and federal and state elections are being held.
This time, not every other time.
Every other time, the county has not paid, or the municipality has not paid. Okay, now...
Well, we do pay, but it's paid here.
The city of Ashford, since I've been working, has never paid for an election. In other words, if I'm running, if I'm running a normal election, as on the schedule that I gave you.
But I'm not talking about the presidential time, I'm talking about like the matter and two councils.
If that is held at the same time that we're also voting for state, or county, or federal people, which in even number of years is the case, the city of Ashford does not pay.
And the only reason I'm asking, I remember the matter had told me that one time before I made this call, it been a while, and she had told me that it costs so much to win an election, to Jane Call's design.
That was a special call election when we were not running?
No, we didn't run a special call. We waited until it was time, and she was saying it would cost the city so much money.
If I'm running a normal election, there's no charge. I have not gone back and checked, but I don't remember one of just Ashford. I run special call elections for Rebecca and Sycamore.
That's well, thanks.
Now, I can... Okay, continuing on. It would be necessary to use paper ballots, since when the state got rid of the machines, they took all of our old ones away. So, there are no old machines sitting around that could be used. The state only has a couple approved ballot printers, one of which is the one that we use, which is Tapnoe Ballots, which is out of Reedsville. There's a charge of two hundred and fifty to set up the ballot, and then it's thirty-seven cents for every ballot that they print. You've got twenty-eight hundred people that couldn't conceivably vote. I'm estimating twenty-five hundred will vote, which is ninety percent turnout. I can't tell you if it'll be sixty percent or ninety percent. Generally, we run sixty to seventy percent turnout for an election. But you can't run out of ballots. You've got to have more than what you think you're gonna need. At ninety percent, at thirty cents each, comes up to nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, fourteen, price of dinner, twenty-one.
Then you've got your delivery cost of fifty dollars to get the ballots here from Reedsville. So, the total for paper ballots would be one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. When you're doing any election, there's absentee by mail ballots that must be mailed. It doesn't matter if you're doing your election or if I am. It takes the first-class stamp and an extra ounce stamp to mail every absentee ballot, because you've got your ballot, you've got your information sheet, you've got your inside envelope, then you've got your middle envelope, then you've got your outside envelope. So, it'll cost ninety cents to mail that to the voter. Estimating two hundred ballots mailed, which may be higher or lower, I have no idea, would cost a hundred and eighty dollars. Anybody that requests absentee ballot is entitled, as long as they're a city resident, is entitled to receive an absentee ballot. We're gonna have to have somebody that issues the ballot no later than three days after the application is received. When the ballots come back, they have to be checked in. They have to be recorded that they were checked in, so the person does not vote twice. The ballots cannot be opened and counted until the tabulation time that needs published occurs. There must be a drop box by law to put the ballots in. You must keep a log of the drop box. You must keep a log of the ballots sent out, the applications that come in, when the ballots come back. All of that is included, but I did not put a dollar in, because that will be a different person that you'll have to have doing that. Just adding up the cost of the ballot and poll workers for early voting in election day comes up to six thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That's assuming you can find people who work for several quarter and half. Which it, and you cannot use my poll workers. To hold an election, you must be certified by the state if you're trained. All the poll workers have to have poll worker training before each election. With only absentee ballots, you have to tabulate and have a consolidation tabulation panel of three people that also will have to be paid. They'll open the ballots, and if there is any dispute, they'll have to duplicate the ballots. These also must be trained. All workers must be sworn in and are accountable for what they do. There's no cell phones permitted during voting or in any polling location. Poll workers must be city of Ashford voters. They cannot be county. They have to be city of Ashford if they're working during municipal election. They cannot be related to anybody who's on the ballot, immediate family member, okay? There, with the new law, poll watchers are permitted. They can come in, they can sit down, they can sit all day and watch. They are permitted by state, so you'll have to make provisions for a place for them to sit.
Excuse me, who can be a poll watcher? Anybody?
In a regular election, each of the parties can send, I believe, three people, plus then, if any candidate that's running, they have anybody in the general public to come in and observe voting. They can observe setting up the election, carrying down from the election, counting all the ballots, and all is open to the public. But you've got to make sure that there's somebody that they are just going to oversee, that the poll watchers don't either film on their phone what's going on, that they don't talk to voters, that they don't talk to poll workers, that they don't interfere in the election process. Yes, sir?
Do you think that's fair to the people in the city of Ashford? They have to go there to Sycamore to vote?
They don't. They've always gone up to Sycamore for early voting.
But he's not early voting. He's not talking about early voting.
I'm talking about all of it. In other words, if I don't run the election itself, then the early voting will be held here. You'll have to do it yourself.
What's wrong with having here? Is that this place disqualified?
Where are you gonna put thirty or forty cars?
Car? We got the seat along the narrows here. We got the road there. The whole thirty cars just by there.
I understand what you're saying, but you and I both know, people don't like to walk any further than they have to. My fear is the safety, because Washington is not the safest road. Some, you put a ninety-year-old...
Just saying, you just don't want to have, you just don't, you want to have it in the county, just saying.
I want to have it where the voters are confident.
There is schoolhouse at the old elementary school.
Okay, I went to the gym. There is one electric circuit.
I do flip to three. I'll flip every one of them.
What Bobby told me is, A, there's no outside lights on that building, on the old gym. So, somebody cannot go in at six in the morning. They cannot be there after it's dark at night at the old gym. There's two electrical outlets, one under each sign, under the gleachers. Remembered? Next thing, the bathrooms are not handicapped accessible. I'll go concession sign, side, there's a step, literally, you have to go up. If you use the locker rooms, there's a step that you have to look down.
But the only thing wrong with this building is saying, I told you, we got the park. We got the plugs. New building, everybody, all the chairs can be moved, line can be moved up. I'm asking, what's the problem here?
Parking.
There's no problem parking. I just told you, we got a whole parking lot right here.
Who's gonna walk people in at five-thirty in the morning when it starts? Who's gonna see that they...
We got police officers. Come on, any service now.
It is pouring down rain. How many voters do you think are gonna walk from back there?
How many voters voted that didn't vote early voting last time? How many voters did we have that didn't vote, that didn't vote early today? Because I was talking from the end to the beginning.
I don't have the numbers from last time either, the numbers from...
Would it be safe, you say, about two hundred? Unless?
I had seven, in twenty twenty, there were seven hundred and nineteen total countywide that voted elections.
Are you talking, you said countywide? We didn't talk about countywide. We talked about red or...
I understand that.
Twenty twenty.
That was in twenty twenty. I do not have twenty twenty-two's numbers. I would say probably three to four hundred.
No, it wasn't three, four hundred.
Okay, Mr. Rogers, please.
Mr. Rogers, did you ask a question? Don't stop me when I ask. I got a right to ask questions, deal like you do. Please, don't stop me. I have got...
It's not just early voting, or it's not just election day. It's early voting also.
But early voting is Sycamore.
No, that is not. If I do not run the election, election day, I am not running early voting either. It's all or nothing.
But I'm saying, early voting, I'll win in Sycamore, right? By the seat of Ashford.
No, it will not be. If I do not do the election in November on election day for the city, I am not doing it.
I understand what you're saying, but hey, we need to do an early voting in Sycamore.
Yes.
Okay, yes, but...
Yes, but...
I don't actually try to, I don't talk too much.
Okay, the county runs early voting from eight to five on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Tuesdays, we come in at seven a.m., and Thursdays, we stay till six p.m. So, basically, we are working extra hours for the advantage of the public being able to vote, because there's so many that work out of town and so many work eight to five. So, by opening early, we make it more convenient. Strictly whatever the city wants to do. City council qualifying dates will be August nineteenth through either the twenty-first or twenty-third. In other words, you have to at least go through Wednesday, but you can go through noon on Friday. I'm requesting the city make a decision by December first, because I'll have to be able to get precinct cards and everything put out to let the voters know where they'll be voting. So, county, state, and federal will be moved, because I cannot, can no longer use the civic center.
I got a question, Ms. Jan.
Yeah.
Did the school ever mention the wrestling building in the back? That's after the conference with... That's not a problem, it's a false.
I have not, nobody's mentioned that building to me.
That building never?
ROTC building was mentioned, and I was told that, that the federal government uses that. I could not be satisfied. But I did not hear anything about the wrestling building.
Wrestling building.
Just wondering, just wondering. I did want you to know, I'm not making a protest. I'm just saying, to me, I'm just saying, that, that, that's not fair for a citizen in the city of Ashford, to me.
Citizens have no problem going to the Board of Elections to vote early.
Well, that was you said. You just say seven hundred, then go.
Seven hundred countywide.
Seven hundred, seven.
Countywide, correct. But there was two thousand five hundred, excuse me, two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven did vote early. So, what I'm saying is, the majority of them will vote early. They have no problem going to Sycamore. A lot of them, yeah, would rather vote early, but you've got those that insist they want to vote election day, which is their rights. I have no problem. It's just the fact that I can't use the civic center anymore, and I have looked high and low, as several other people have. We cannot come up with any place that either has adequate security or electricity, or is ADA compliant. Mr. Snacks, you have a question? If I move the polling place to agricultural building with the county, federal, and state, then I would continue to do early voting in Sycamore, yes. If I do not move voting, then the city will have to be responsible for their own, own early voting. It's the school construction, it's the safety of students having voters in and out, interacting with the students, and the safety of the election equipment.
Just wondering, is there a big problem that we provide transportation to the ones who don't have transportation?
Not at all. I've got a couple board members that do it all the time, and a lot of people call people for early voting or election day. I have no problem with that at all. I have a problem if you're a candidate, you cannot call people. Okay, that's the stipulation. If you're a candidate, you cannot call people. Other than that, anybody can provide transportation. There's plenty of parking at Mulholland Tech. Hundred fifty feet puts you midway between the edge of the parking lot and the fly pole in the middle of the grass.
Not personally, I have a problem.
I want to work with the city. I'm not trying to stir the pot, but unfortunately, the elections need moved. As you can see, the voters will already have voted at the new facility for the presidential preference in March and for the primary election in May and a runoff in June. So, by the time November rolls around, people will already have voted three times at the other building. Realistically, all we're talking about is November's election.
So, now we're not gonna have a whole election at high school?
That is correct. We cannot get into high school.
I'm not talking about this, this time. I'm talking from now.
Once I move, I am not going back in the building, correct. There's a cost involved of sending out twenty-eight hundred postcards to tell everybody it's changing, and by the time I do all the signage and stuff, I'm not, I cannot be assured that when the new high school opens, the civic center's gonna have any better security and that there aren't still fifty, a hundred keys to that building.
But how many years have been I did? How many, how many elections you don't run yet?
Since I started, which has been, what, twelve or thirteen years since then?
A massive problem.
It's been a problem all along. It's just the state election board has gotten involved. And all it takes is for one person to come in with a camera and see somebody in there with my equipment sitting there. School board goes in and has their meeting on Monday night, and I have to go sit through their meeting because my equipment's sitting there. And if somebody took a picture of my equipment lined up along the wall while they're having their meeting, I am in trouble, and so is the school board. So, I'm trying to eliminate Turner County getting called before the state election.
You're trying to move the city election out of the city permanently, because you got...
Correct. But the city of Sycamore has been moved out of the city limits.
We're not Sycamore, we Ashford.
I'm talking about two tenths of a mile. The option is the city can do paper ballots and do your own voting. There again, somebody's gonna have to count all the paper ballots, because you cannot use my equipment to scan the paper ballots. There again, somebody's gonna have to come hold the paper ballots, because you cannot use my equipment to scan the paper ballots. Any more questions?
Thank you, Ms. Winter. You gave us some really good information. Y'all, please give it some thought, because we've got to let, let them know by December, it's not leaving a lot of time to choose a polling place for city election in November.
I will give the mayor a copy of the new state election code regarding elections.
Thank you. This will be available for anyone to see anytime at city hall. Thank you, Ms. Winter. All right. Mr. Chief Purvis, you ready to talk about the Turner County Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Yeah, so, uh, I attended all the hazardous mitigation meetings with Turner County EMA. Worked real hand in hand with, uh, EMA Director Mark Robinson. Uh, we have to update the plan every five years. It's pretty much the same stuff. We kind of update some, some monetary values for things, just for inflation and what have you. Um, but basically what it boils down to, we've got it updated, uh, we have to have this plan in place so that we can receive any kind of monetary value back from FEMA, uh, through natural disasters, anything like that, like what came up. Come through, we're able to, um, go back to the federal government and, and ask for, you know, money back off of those things, so. Um, I do not have the actual hazardous mitigation plan. It has to be approved by us, by Rebecca, by Sycamore, and also by Turner County. Uh, and then it will be sent up to the, uh, federal side of it to get approved. Um, I do have, however, with me, the, uh, appendices. Uh, it shows you all the work that we have done as far as the weather, when we've had bad weather, what has happened. We've updated all of our critical facilities, you know, police department, city hall, different places like that, that if something was to happen, we would be able to get some mitigation money on that, um, and just everything over the last five years or so. Anybody wanting to see it, I figured, I figured it's going to happen later on. And so, uh, you know, you're more than welcome to look at it, but this is not the actual plan. This is just the appendices and all the work that has been in it. We held four meetings, we failed, um, a start meeting, a final meeting. So there's a resolution for y'all to sign. Same, Turner County put it off, so y'all can go meet, I don't know about commissioners.
We're doing a combined work session, regular meeting next week.
So they're gonna be doing theirs as well. So we've all got to get it approved at the local level, so that we can send it on up.
And when does that have to be done?
Uh, soon as y'all will. I mean, um, cause once all these get approved, then we can get copies of actual hazards.
So what is the pleasure of the council? Do y'all want some time to?
Y'all are more than welcome to, like, so this is all the work that has went in, everybody just attended meetings, everything. But I think, I think y'all have a, a resolution, so if y'all wanted to sign, like, y'all want to wait until that. Uh, I believe Turner County's gonna go ahead and sign theirs. Um, Sycamore tabled theirs last month, hopefully they'll get theirs done this month, hopefully. But it doesn't, it doesn't bind us to anything. It's only so that we get something bad, or a natural disaster, or something like that. We can get some mitigation money back from the federal government for some of the stuff that we have to.
And how soon do you need this?
I'm likely to have it by December, if, if at all possible.
Will the December council meeting be timed out?
I believe so. It gives y'all time to look over whatever y'all need to look at.
And we can wait on the resolution as well? Okay, is that all I can tell them? Y'all expect to look at it before we put the actual?
I also believe if Turner County does their approval, will actually give in hand, uh, the actual plan. That way y'all can look at that as well.
Is, is this for us?
That's for y'all.
Okay, thank you.
I had it emailed formatted well, if I don't.
Mr. Hall is ill, and he is not here to, um, discuss the defined benefit retirement plan re. It's a restatement. Actually, all we're, we're doing is, is choosing to, to stay with the same plan for our retirement program. I have to admit, I have not looked at it, uh, it's counting on Mr. Hall to do it and explain it to us. I don't know if there is a deadline. Yeah, December fifteenth. So if y'all want to come by the office and take a look at it, we may have to have a call meeting on December fifteenth to read off the new plan. Or it's a restatement, it's not really a new plan. December twenty-third. Is that okay?
I have a motion to table the, um, defined benefit retirement plan.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Smith wishes to discuss the downtown development authority. Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am, I won't do it too much detail, but just to give you guys insight, I think it works. Some people have an impression that we have a move, um, but it's simply not true. Um, but it's not, you know, last time I had a meeting.
Uh, we've not been very, very active, Mr. Smith, for a couple of years. Um, what happens is, if, if something comes up that is, needs taking care of, I just, we still have some members. We don't have enough. We have five members who are still more or less active, who don't need on a regular basis, that I called in when something, we need to, to something. Oh, no, I, 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 I'd have to go look through my minutes. I can't tell you.
And the board's supposed to just, it's just a seven, right?
I'm sorry.
Five or seven?
Seven.
Seven.
But I have the bylaws at the office.
But there was a two councilmen was there to this day?
He said two, he takes the people.
The council.
Is it two?
Two.
Is it two or one? Is it, I don't even know.
I don't think that I, I hate one person to represent the city.
Just to give you guys an insight, the highest rate on motel and hotel taxes is eight percent.
That's where we get our funding.
Right, you get your fund for, um, hotel and hotel, and it's paid between the chamber and this, um, city's general fund, which is five percent. Sixty percent from that five percent goes to the chamber, forty percent from that goes to the city's general funds. And then within the three percent, fifty percent go to the downtown government, and the other fifty percent go to the city's, um, tourist fund. So I think we need to onboard this, and they are on a board, because there's not, you can show the person, right? No, that's not fine, I'm saying.
No.
We have the board, the right.
Yes.
So I just want to give you guys an insight of that. Thank you.
Uh, just, uh, the money that comes downtown development authorities kept in separate account.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's not legal to receive this. It's, it's like an entity unto itself, but it's still under the auspices of the city.
Right, right.
Yes. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Councilmember Smith also wanted to revisit the speed bumps on Southeast Street. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, no, East Street have a real thing.
How you guys doing?
Hey.
Get to you guys once again. Thank you, uh, Councilmembers, uh, Sheldon and Smith for the, I don't need to come up before the council. We understand that you guys made a decision, and I truly believe a lot of people in our community, I say our community, I live on Hannah Avenue. Uh, Lee Street is our main street to get there, and I would say there's probably seven streets. Now, we, we know there is a speeding problem. There's a speeding problem with Lee Street, uh, with Florida Street, with, we have a death on Carlos, and so on and so forth. There is a speeding problem, but it's the abundance of stop signs and speed bumps, and those speed bumps are crazy. They're crazy high. And I went out and I looked in a couple of the cities, and I took pictures of ones that we have. I don't have the specifications on the speed bumps that you guys put down, but I've been told that those speed bumps are not the right speed bumps to put down. Now, I believe, when I asked Mr. Smith, he asked me, he said, well, I don't, we haven't gotten a, abundance of people that is opposing those, uh, speed bumps. But you guys know too that in this city, you very seldom have people come up here to the city council meeting. You very seldom have come to the Board of Education meeting. You very seldom have them come to the county commissioners meeting. But it does not mean that we don't have an interest, or we don't understand what's going on in the city. And I would say that I have cars, a lot of people have cars, and when we go down one of those speed bumps, man, it's so high, you, the bottom of your car hit those speed bumps. And I know when we have issues, mechanical issues with our cars, and we bring them to the city, you guys are gonna say, well, we don't have anything to do with that. And you probably don't, but at the end of the day, those things are affecting our everyday life. You only have seven streets, seven to eight streets on that, that main strip. And we do understand that there is a problem with speeding, but what about police? But I, I, I wish there purpose. Free police over there, put them out there, and let people see that you got police out there. If the police is out there, guess what? People are slowing down, or they'll get a ticket. They'll get a ticket, and you win. But you don't win by just throwing out stop signs and throw, throwing out, you got a four-way on Lee and MLK. You come around the backside of Thompson, and then you got a, you got a, like, stop sign, two other stop signs, one on the end where his camp is. And you guys made that somewhat like a three-way or four-way. I absolutely tried to stop going that way. But if I wanna go see my auntie, then I have to go that way. So, and, and they just, uh, a normal day, that is an overkill. And I will speak for our community. Our community is saying that, I see that, um, you don't live in Hannahville, you don't live in Hannahville. Who to live on the other side, and she understands too, because I had Andrea, Councilmember Pierce. She understands, because I have a conversation with her as well. Uh, Cory doesn't live in Hannahville, and Janet does not either. But I know that you guys have a few people that came to a meeting, and they made a decision on what it is, but what research did we have? Before we made those decisions? Because I think it's supposed to get mayor and council. And if you guys could revisit and look into it, and maybe bring the police into it, and make those, make a wise decision. Because right now, the city hasn't done that before. It went on, on the other side of town, the west side, and they put up abundance of stop signs. And they ended up bringing those up as well, because it's just overkill. We understand that speed sometimes kill, but speeding, those stop signs, stop signs aren't meant to curb speed. They're not, stop signs aren't for that. Especially at an intersection, you put stop signs for intersection, not just to say, well, we gonna put one here, here, and here. But you guys are, just a normal day of life, just go to Dollar Jump, you gotta go the whole way around town, just going the other way, you gotta go the other way around. And then, I thought I was doing the right thing. I go around the other way, come in from work one day, and there's another one at the top of Hannah, a speed bump. So if you guys look at it now, people have actually gone and tried to curb that, and go on the outside of that speed bump. And I'm not saying that for you guys to go and, and put something to deter them from doing that. Maybe people just don't wanna hurt their vehicles. Time is hard for everybody. And once you make those, once you have those mechanical issues, we already know that you guys probably not gonna, uh, take sides with us when we say something is wrong with their cars. I have two sports cars. And I swear, if I, if I go through one of those things, you basically gotta come to a stop, a full stop. And for you, it's the first accelerator and go forward. And then you still have to go zero miles an hour. And it doesn't make any sense. And I'm asking you guys, if y'all could revisit that, put the speed bumps up there, that's fine. But put the ones that is needed, not those, those things are so thick, it's ridiculous. I didn't take, I didn't take, because I very rarely have time. But I did ask Councilwoman Smith, hey, why don't you go, and I will assist you. I'll walk with you, I'll stand at the top of the street, and we'll ask every person that comes up and down that street. Or we can go line by line, and let's knock on the door, and let's ask that community, is this an overkill? Is that too much? And they will pretty much agree that we do need something to deter and to slow it down. But at the end of the day, that's just too much. And I'm just asking if you guys could revisit that on behalf of our community. Most people don't even live over there. But at the end of the day, you guys will depre, deappreciate what we said.
I understand as well. Me, you had a conversation. You also said we need to put stop signs, so I guess we can change it something different.
Put stop signs.
We had a conversation.
I'm talking, you didn't, twice in time.
I got that, anyway.
Me? That's all?
Anyway, uh.
And you did?
Sorry, sorry about taking the finish, but I do travel that way every day. I travel city, but I'm not there today. I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but at the time, parents was worried about their kids.
And which they are.
I understand, but you were saying it's an overkill.
It is.
The speed bumps are high, they're, they're, you're correct. They did purchase the wrong speed bump. But it's a, it's hand in hand situation. You know, I, I love being intervened. If they go on my way, go out my way, then that's my kid.
Okay, Councilman, Councilman Robert, you really admit that you guys ordered the wrong product. So you guys put out the wrong product, so we can, they ain't gonna put ourselves in danger with that, uh, with the wrong product? Go put, get the right product, and put the right product out there. And that's fine, we don't hide. Me specifically, and I talked to a lot of people in there, and they did specify, and say that it is too much. Those things, like you said, they're heightened, they're too high.
They are, they are.
And I'm not saying they, I would say get the police out there. Get the police out, mention it, purpose. Put the police out there.
Just want, uh, but no, no taking, but we, we'll get it up.
Appreciate that. Just like you said, they want to revisit that, and I asked them, can I come and speak on our, our, just I spent down here to get you. But at the end of the day, I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak on behalf of our community. There was all of those questions?
Do you think the stop signs are not, I mean, is that, is it overkill, stop signs and speed bumps, or do you think?
I think speed bumps are appropriate, because yes, I do. I, I really, I think that if you get the right speed bumps there, or the speed humps, that'd be sufficient. Thank you.
Uh, at this time, we have finished our regular session. We are going to have a, uh, an executive session for this discussion of personnel and litigation. Uh, everyone is welcome to hang around until we come back into the regular session.
May we get rid of those speed bumps?
I'm sorry? Y'all wanna vote on that tonight?
Yeah. I also most of the same those speed bumps that we have in, on Lee Street, to purchase the correct ones and remove the stop sign.
All right, y'all have a motion to, uh, reduce the height of the speed bumps over on Southeast Street. I have a, a motion. May I have a second?
Second, second.
You have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, then, Mr. Chief Purvis, you, you got a lot to do.
They're gonna go in the middle. We gotta leave a space in the middle, drive like all the way across the street, and have to go over the rest of the street.
Yeah, I, I know y'all already voted. I have no problem with it, but, um, the city manager, the stop sign, from, from what I gather from him, was never meant to stay. They didn't know how long it would take to get speed bumps.
They didn't know how long it would take to get speed bumps. So that was, the stop sign was just to prevent a whole lot of speeding to the speed bump were purchased. I didn't know if I'd think about the wrong speed bumps. But what Ms. Walker said is pretty much accurate. They are high. Even though I have an SUV, they, they are high. And with the, the police, I don't care if you fuck police all day, people were not speeding. But I know the police can't say the ones by all day. So I, I mean, other than writing citation, that's about the only thing you can do other than the speed bump. And, and I love the speed bumps myself. They are high. But we need something, just like they need on car bombs. We don't want that incident on Lee that happened on car bombs. Don't want anyone. But especially on Lee where we have a lot, a lot of cases. So that's, I mean, I, I totally agree with the motion. We just don't make any care, but the stop sign was never meant to be that bad.
But the motion does carry that we will remove the speed bumps and, um, try to find some there, couple of lower to the ground. Thank you. Uh, at this time, I need a motion.
I have a motion to go to the session for personnel and litigation.
Uh, when we come back into regular session, there will probably be a vote. Uh, so if y'all want to hang around for a little while. So I have a motion and a second going to executive session for the purpose of personnel and litigation. Did I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.